Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's Town of Danvers zoning board of appeals. We're now in session. I'd like to start off by asking if you could just silence any mobile devices or phones, beepers, whatever you might have, so we're not interrupted. I will start by introducing our board members. Down to our right is one of our alternates, Becky Kilborn, Corrine Dougherty. Our clerk tonight is Ken Scholes, myself, John Bounder as the clerk. To my left is Ken Jovanin, Chris Dambowski, and our other alternate is Kevin Burridge. And Kevin, am I saying your name right? I have to keep checking.
I say Beric, but close enough.
I'll get it. Beric.
I knew you were talking about me.
And from our planning department is our planning director, Mr. Brian Zickelli. I'll go briefly over our procedure. We'll have our clerk read the applicant. At that point, we'll ask you to go up to the microphone, up to the podium there, and describe to us what it is you'd like to do. We are on Danvers cable, so please announce your name and address if you get up to speak as part of the public. After you present your case to us, we'll come back to the board for questions amongst the board members. After that, we'll open it up to the public. If there's any comments or questions from the public, at that point, we'll finish and return to our board. Our board will deliberate. We ask that we're not interrupted, and based on those deliberations, you'll get a sense of which way your case is going, and we'll explain your options to you at that point. With that said, members, we were in receipt of board minutes dated both October 6th and October 20th. I didn't attain a motion, but I would like to open it up for discussion. I will start it out by saying I did have some discussion with Mr. Zickelli, and I believe we have one person at Town Hall who's taking care of minutes for multiple boards. It seems like other boards want maybe less detail than this board, and I feel like in my review of the minutes, the minutes haven't had enough detail. So I'd like to open it up for discussion, I guess, based on that, and whether or not we approve it or hold it for tonight. Anyone?
I agree, Mr. Chair. We could use some more detail on our minutes, only because we actually refer back to them, and sometimes it's not just a week or a month later, it's years later. So the more detail we have with the minutes would be helpful to us and also helpful moving forward. So I agree, we could spruce us up a bit.
Let me go out to Brian. Brian, if you want to maybe shed some more light. Does that make sense, our request?
Yeah. So right now, we're trying to formalize, at some level, all the type, all the minutes of all the boards and committees. Like you said, some were like, oh, they were telling our regulatory board assistant, like, this is a little too much, like, we don't, we don't need all this detail. And then that's been transferred over to ZBA a little bit, and we're like, whoa, wait, we kind of liked what you had before, or at least. So I am dealing with it. It is an issue. I agree with you.
Okay.
It's making it a little bit hard on her, on our regulatory board assistant, because she's trying to field many different. But I agree, and we're going to try to get it a little bit better for you guys.
Is there any other discussion amongst the board? Brian, I think with that said, at this point, we'll hold on approving these minutes and looking for maybe some more detailed, updated versions of both October 6th and October 20th. So with that said, we'll move on to our continued cases. I don't see our first applicant here, so we will skip over that and go to our second continued case. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case tonight is 103 Newberry Street. This is highway corridor zone, map 40, lot 12. Request a variance under table two to place a mobile home number 22 on the side property line, abutting the cemetery, where a side setback of 25 feet is required. The request is made by Leah and James LLC, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 25-5119.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann, and I'm here on behalf of North Shore Property Group LLC. The applicant in this case, relative to the property at 103 Newberry Street. With me tonight, on behalf of the applicant, is Joe Reggiero. The project engineer, Will Schudah, is also here this evening, as well as the property owner, James St. Pierre. We appeared before you back beginning of October, October 6th, and made a full presentation at that time, requesting a variance to allow the placement of one of the mobile homes at a point to be on the lot line. So it's the mobile home itself is kind of a corner to the lot line, and the closest point touches the lot line. So we were requesting a variance to allow that mobile home to remain as it has been installed. It was installed in that location primarily because of the driveway configuration, and so the mobile home wouldn't stick out into the driveway, as was originally proposed. As you can see there, it kind of sticks out into the driveway. So it was pulled back, and the point that's closest to the cemetery lot line, the point of the mobile home touches that lot line. We requested a continuance to allow us to consider the comments that we heard, and to investigate whether we could pull the mobile home back from that pointed lot line. And again, the lot line we're talking about is the lot line with the cemetery. The owner of the cemetery is unknown, and unfortunately, this situation happened during the course of placing the mobile homes on the lots pursuant to a decision of this board back in 2023, and it wasn't discovered until the as-built plan was prepared. Since the last hearing, Mr. Zickelli and Mr. Houdin, the building inspector, have gone out to the site and have looked at the property, and I have also met with Mr. Zickelli to review the original decision, the 2023 decision of this board. And I have submitted a letter to you dated November 5th with a proposal based on what we heard from you, our review, and my discussions with Mr. Zickelli and his review of the property with Mr. Houdin. And we are proposing to move the mobile home, it's number 22, one foot off of the lot line. Mr. Zickelli and Mr. Houdin agreed that moving the home any more than one foot off of the lot line would cause an unsafe condition for that mobile home as it relates to the drive aisle. We've submitted a revised plan. I think if you can pull that up, please, which shows the mobile home being moved so that the point of the mobile home is one
This is the original plan that you submitted with?
Right. And then with my November 5th letter, I submitted a revised plan.
Sorry. You'll have to give me a minute.
Yep. As you'll note, the existing home to the right of unit 22 is one foot off of the lot line.
Attorney McCann, just for clarity, can you identify the number of that one to the right? Is that considered number 24?
Oh, boy, that's 23.
Number 23, okay.
Really small on that piece of paper. Can hopefully blow it up.
The one to the right is 21.
Mr. Chair?
Why not 23?
21, the one to the left is 23.
Are we in receipt of the November 5th letter? I don't seem to have a copy of it.
It would have been in your package. It would have been in the digital copy, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Yeah. Not a paper copy, no.
There wouldn't have been a paper.
So we're proposing to move unit 22 one foot off of the lot line, which is in keeping with the abutting mobile home, which is also one foot off of the lot line. And in reviewing, and again, Mr. Zickelli and Mr. Houdin were in agreement that moving it any more than a foot would cause the mobile home to be in an unsafe condition as it relates to the drive aisle. In reviewing the prior Board of Appeals decision, that's 23-5014, this board granted a variance to allow new mobile homes to be constructed on this property. And specifically, the wording of the decision is, "The variance is issued in accordance with table two to allow new mobile homes to be placed closer to the side and rear lot lines than permitted as of right in the highway corridor zone, but no closer than the existing mobile homes are to the property line." Where the unit number 22 is now, which is, the point is on the lot line, that is not consistent with the board's decision, because it is closer to the lot line than the existing mobile homes. What our proposal is to move unit 22 one foot off of the lot line, keeping the drive aisle clear, and in doing that, we are then consistent with the board's prior decision, because the home is no closer than the existing mobile homes. And that existing mobile home happens to be right next door. So we think this proposal is consistent with the board's 2023 decision. We don't feel that there's really any action that the board needs to take, because moving the mobile home will bring it into compliance with the decision. And I think that is where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney McCann. But before I pass it out to the board, so you are asking this board, I guess I'm confused. I remember the decision, based on the minutes, that it was going to be a 10-foot setback. You asked for a variance to allow a previously approved mobile home to be located closer to the line than permitted. Is that still the ask?
I think in moving the mobile home a foot away from the lot line, it is now consistent with the decision. Our original ask-
I understand that part, but I guess based on this variance, this new request?
The new request was based on leaving it where it is now, which is zero feet off of the lot line, and for that, I would need a variance.
Okay. So you're saying, if you move this a foot, you don't need a decision from this board?
I think that's true.
She would, yeah, there would be a withdrawal.
Interesting.
If you're willing to let them move it one foot.
All right. Well, let me put it out for questions, and we'll see if we can't figure this out. We'll start down there with you, Becky.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Corrine?
I have a few questions. I know we're in this situation, and we can't really go back. So I'm trying to, I guess, ask some questions, so we prevent these kind of things from happening in the future. So I went back, and I reviewed not only our minutes, but I also saw that, I looked at the jacket. So I saw that a few weeks after you came to this board, you went to site plan review, and then after that, I'm assuming, or even before that, there was a building permit pulled for this work, correct?
It would have been after that, but yes.
Okay. So after that, you pulled the building permit, and I'm assuming that at that time, it still had that particular mobile home to be 10 feet off the lot line, correct?
I think that's true, yes.
Okay. So maybe you can kind of fill in the gap for me. So after you pulled the building permit, you pour the pads, and then there was a decision made as to which mobile home would be put on that site, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then prior to, I guess, some of moving in, is there a certificate of occupancy that is issued for each one of these mobile homes? Or do they all have to be completed, and then you go for a certificate of occupancy for all of them at once?
I believe the certificates of occupancy are individually issued, and I'm looking at Mr. Zickelli, because I know he and Mr. Houdin went through this as well.
Mobile homes are a little bit different in terms of COs, because they are actually fully inspected before they get to the site.
Okay.
So we do give them a CO, but essentially, sorry, the only thing that the building inspector is going to inspect is the concrete pad. Even the stairs leading up are not attached to that mobile home. He's not, we are not even inspecting those stairs. We are literally just inspecting that concrete pad, making sure it's safe, and then obviously the hookups. But in terms of the CO, like, the CO gets issued when that, essentially, that concrete pad gets signed off on. But the certificate of occupancy for the home is actually done off-site before it even gets to the site.
Okay.
Not by us, by the state.
I was just going to say, is this like one, like a prehab home?
Like a modular?
Like a modular home, where it's the state that inspects it?
So he's not, our staff is not going in there and going inside the home, inspecting it. It's just the pad.
All right. But the pad was 10 feet back, correct?
Yeah, the pad was not in the location that we're talking about.
Right. So it was, they made the decision to move it back before they poured the pad. Then they poured the pad, and our building inspector inspected it and signed off on it.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. So there are many people who made mistakes here. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken? I have no questions. Ken, Jay?
I have no questions.
Chris?
No questions. Thank you.
And Kevin?
What was the closest to, at a abutting lot line, that a mobile home was in 20, at the time of the 2023 decision? Is that one foot?
One foot.
It's the one right next to it, 23.
Yes. It just happens to be the one right next to it.
I understand. I just can't, I just can't tell if that one was there in 2023.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Attorney McCann, I got a couple. I guess, just let me see if I can get this straight. So it sounds like the applicant made the decision to pour the pad closer than we approved. Is it fair to say that?
I guess so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I guess so, although it wasn't.
We were all under the impression of 10 feet.
Yeah.
But somehow, this has got poured at zero feet. And what is the length of this particular mobile home, number 22? Yeah, I'm guessing it's the maximum, 60? Because I believe you stated from our old notes, that three lengths are 52, 50-
56. It is not the largest.
It's a 56, okay.
Correct.
And where, so if this board, I guess, agrees to let you withdraw and just do this, I guess I'm still not clear how we orchestrate this, but let me hold that thought for a second. Where would the propane tanks be in relation to the, where are they now, and will they move? Are they considered on this property, or are they on the cemetery property?
Come on up.
Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Will Schudah from the Moore and Cameron Group. The propane tanks are located on the back of the building, and they are on the property, so they are not on the cemetery property.
Okay. And how, I guess we don't have a setback requirement on propane tanks?
Correct.
Okay. So they could be at the zero-foot mark by right, I'm assuming? Okay.
Yeah, but if they're in the back.
Hold on, sorry. So I think, I still have, I just don't understand how this happened. But so the decision was made, we poured the pad too close, and we just went with it, hoping, I guess I don't understand why, why is it before us? Because something broke at the end of inspection, I'm assuming. Somebody said, hey, wait a minute, this is in the wrong spot.
No, it, nothing broke. It was part of the as-built plan preparation.
When I say broke, I mean, something finally got caught that, hey, this is in the wrong place.
Yes, of the as-built.
And that was the as-built process.
When Mr. Schudah was doing the as-built plan, and he said, hey,
This was supposed to be 10?
It's supposed to be 10.
And it's zero.
And it's at zero at that point, and that was, that was when it happened. That's exactly what happened.
And if we looked back, I mean, hindsight here, what could have been done, or what should have been done, to not have this happen? A smaller mobile home? A different inspection point on the pad? I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, it probably at, well, the pad, there could have been a certification required for the foundation.
And do we, let me just interrupt you, though. So do we, the town does not require that, because this is a mobile home park, and there's multiple pads? Or is this something we just missed as a town?
You know, I think there were a number of players here. There, it was poured too close. They're dealing with a lot line up against a piece of property that is an unknown owner, that the mobile home park does actually some maintenance of the cemetery and takes care of it. So it wasn't an intentional, oh, we're just going to disregard that setback. They thought they were putting it in a place that was acceptable, and it's not, even according to the prior decision, if we talk about the fact that it's closer than the one next to it, which is one foot off of the lot line. So it, it happened.
Yep.
And, and the unit was put there, and it is occupied. Moving it, even the one foot, is not going to be easy.
Well, that's, that was my next question. What's it going to take to move it this one foot?
Well, it's going to take a bit, not only, construction-wise, they're going to have to pour additional foundation and physically move it. But there is an elderly couple living in this mobile home. They're going to have to be displaced, put in a hotel for three, four days, best case. It's, that's the timeframe.
And they, what are they, jackhammer out the one foot that we're moving it, on the backside, I guess?
They would, yeah. And they would have to add the foot on the front. So it's a lot of work and a lot of displacement of this couple.
I understand that, but that is no fault of this board's, right?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But that's what we have to do to make this conform. And, you know, it would be the same process if we were moving it further. But again, the building inspector and Mr. Zickelli have looked at this and came to the same conclusion, that the person, or persons who poured the foundation, that having it further from the lot line puts this home in a bad position for the drive aisle. The applicant and the owner of the property have done a really good job addressing, updating, creating a nice neighborhood for these folks. They've done- They've done a lot of work up there since 2023, when this decision was granted. And it fits, and it, it fits with the drive aisle and everything else, but it's a lot of work for one foot, for sure. But that's what, that's what has to be done, and that's what has to be done.
It has to be done, right, okay. Um, and what, if anything, has, um, has the applicant done to try to acquire the cemetery property? Has it been any steps there?
We don't even know who owns it.
Yeah. So none, nothing's happening there?
No. As I said, they do some mowing and, and that sort of thing.
And, uh, mobile home number 23 is also at a one-foot setback? Do we know that?
Uh, number 23 is one foot, and then number 21 is two feet.
Okay. So walk us through this a little, I just want to understand it more for the board and myself. Uh, so you're actually asking for a withdrawal now of this variance request that you put into us? And, and I guess, how, so this is just now handled with the inspections department, that you will now move the one foot?
Basically, if they don't.
And what guarantees do we have, I guess?
If they don't, if they don't move it one foot, we can.
They're under a, like?
It's the $300 a day zoning violation standard.
So you'd be under enforcement order if this doesn't happen?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what you're asking? You're asking for a withdrawal without prejudice?
I think that is, uh, an appropriate way to go, based on the prior decision.
But if, if 20 years from now, uh, the future boards look at the minutes from the decision in 2023, is there going to be confusion? Because the decision says 10 feet, but yet this one's at a foot? How does that get rectified?
The decision, the decision does not say 10 feet. The decision says, no closer than the existing mobile homes are to the property line. The decision says nothing about 10 feet. The decision doesn't reference plans. So the decision will control.
So how did we come up with 10 feet, then?
It, it was on the, the application. It was certainly discussed, but the decision, the motion of the board, and the decision of the board, is to allow new mobile homes to be placed closer to the side and rear lot lines than permitted as of right in highway corridor zone, but no closer than the existing mobile homes are to the property line. That is the motion, that's the decision of the board.
All right. Um, I've taken up enough time here. Um, I'll just ask the board if there's any additional questions before I go out to the public. Hearing none. Uh, anybody here want to speak on 103 Newbury Street? Yeah, just want to.
Good evening. Bill Brass, Tommy, I'm a precinct one. What I heard was the trailer was inspected off-site. What I heard was, I believe, that the pad was inspected. I also heard that steps were gonna be added from the pad to the trailer. Who inspects those, and when is that done?
Well, I, I think that was just an example, what Mrs. Zakelli was pointing out, is that they don't own that inspection piece of it, if I heard it correctly.
Right, they don't even, there are stairs there, they don't, they're not inspected. The only thing that.
It's not part of our process to do that, because it's a pre-built home.
So the steps were attached to the trailer and not the pad, or?
They're not attached to anything.
They're not attached to anything.
They're just there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here on 103?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, very quickly, I agree with Attorney McCann, that if this does get moved one foot, that it technically would be consistent with the previous decision. However, there was a mistake in that decision. It didn't reference plans, it didn't reference, it didn't reference distance. I think it'd be much cleaner if, what, if, if, if you agree that, that you would like to move this one foot, I think you should give the relief for one foot, and then it's, then we know what's going on. We, the, like you said, the, the next board wouldn't have to figure out, which decision are we looking at? Why is that, why is it, why is that closer? Like, I think we should make this clean.
So not, well, Attorney McCann, maybe if I could have you back up. Perhaps we don't ask for a, um, uh, withdrawal here, and we do act on a decision. Again, I, I, I remember it as 10 feet, I thought the minutes reflected 10 feet. It surprised me that the decision states what it states. So you can understand the confusion here, and I think there's been confusion from the get-go. And I agree with you, I think the applicant's done a lot of nice work there. I, I do remember a reduction in the amount of units. I think they were looking for two additional units, they withdrew that based on input from the board. So I, I do think this is, uh, an unfortunate situation. So I guess I'm gonna ask you, uh, withdrawal without prejudice or a variance? To state this clearly, as Mrs. Zakelli says, so down the road, there isn't confusion.
I have no problem with, with either, either approach. I think we don't need a variance, but if the board is willing to grant the variance, I think that makes a cleaner record.
Well, if we grant this, we're granting it for just this unit, not the site.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, board members, any other input on that before we deliberate? Okay, I'll go for deliberations here, and Becky, we'll start with you.
Um, I won't be voting on this, so I'll defer to the board.
Thank you, Becky. Corinne?
Um, Mr. Chair, I agree with what you said, and, um, Attorney McCann, I agree too. I don't want to have you withdraw, I would prefer to, to grant relief, only because should they want to expand in the future, I would want them to come back and not think that they're, or be under the assumption that as long as it's like a foot or two away, that they don't need relief. Um, so that's number one. Number two, I, I want the owner to recognize that should we ever grant relief in the future, and an issue like this comes up, and I agree, if you look at where it was placed, it's in the drive lane, and that's a very dangerous situation. So I agree that it should, that the mobile home shouldn't have been out that far, but they really should have contacted the building department, or come back to us to ask for that additional relief. That would have been the right path. However, the building department, when they went out to inspect, they should have realized that where the pad was poured was not the correct, um, was not the, the correct, I guess, position or the, the, the right distance. So, based on that, and the fact that this would be a disruption to these, these homeowners, and also a big expense for your client, and it was something we should have picked up, um, I, I would be in favor of you keeping it where it is, and not incurring any additional cost.
So, are you?
I am for the zero feet.
Okay, that was the third option that hasn't been thrown out yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was one of the.
I like that option.
We're voting on whether they move it a foot or withdraw.
Uh, the original application is still before you.
I, I, I would vote yes on the original application, then.
Which is to move it a foot?
No, no.
No, leave it where it is.
To leave it where it is.
Where it is.
Okay. Uh, Ken?
I'll, I'll, I'll vote to leave it where it is, and it only, and only, the only reason is because of that cemetery, where we don't know who the owner is. It's a very unique situation, so I will vote for the zero.
And let me just add, I agree with, with Ken, it's because of where it's located, and I know that we don't know who the owner is. I don't know what the process is for adverse possession, but, um, again, if he's doing the, the, the maintenance work, then, you know, maybe he should own the, that property too, and then this wouldn't even be an issue.
Agree. Uh, Ken Jay?
Well, just to make a comment about the cemetery, there are bodies there, so I don't think anyone can adversely possess the, the chattel that is, the bodies, that's hallowed ground, and I think, yeah, that should be left alone. Um, I am for the zero. Where was I voted for this, um, last time? And the statement I was making, well, the protein, the protein, the propane tanks are on the, the back, but they're over to the right, so there is, there's an angle, so, um, they're not on the line, because before I was thinking that, oh, if they're on the back, they must be on the line, but that was just, uh, yeah, they're right there. So I, I am for just leaving it there, so you don't displace the elderly couple, and there's no reason to destroy stuff when it's not harming anything. There's a rite of passage through that cemetery, I would think, that people can see, well, I don't know if people are gonna see their loved ones, it's been a while, but still, if they want to, they have access in there, I'm sure.
All right, Chris?
I would vote in favor, it stay as-is, as well.
And Kevin?
Um, I, I guess the, the part of the mystery I still don't quite understand, Mr. Chairman, is you've, you've referenced thinking that it was 10 feet, the decision says, um, no closer. Uh, and so, much like the minutes get done once we leave the meeting, so the, so do the decisions. Uh, and so, I don't, I'm trying to think of how we get after this problem, where we don't all think we said something in the meeting, the decision says something slightly different, and then all of our signatures just get stamped on it. Um, the, the, the best I can come up with is to do more like other communities, and generally not issue decisions in the same night we hear a case. Say, thank you very much, please go draft a decision that says X to staff, and then we'll all, you know, consider that decision the next time. I think, I mean, that's the only foolproof way around it, to make sure our decision says what we think it, it says. Otherwise, this, this problem is going to repeat itself, and, and we're never gonna.
We're open to that.
Yeah, and we, we have no idea how many bodies are buried, not, I'm not trying to make a bad joke about the cemetery, but no idea how many times this has or hasn't happened, and we won't know until it comes up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Attorney McCann, I, I won't vote in favor of this, I think, uh, our decision was clear the first time. You still have the votes, but, uh, I, I will oppose this, so. Um, board members, if I could get a motion, please.
Would you like me to read it? Um, I, I make a motion to grant a variance under table two, to place a mobile home on this, a side property line, abutting the cemetery, where a side setback of 25 feet is required, and that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district, the hardship is the irregular, irregular shape of the lot, a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good, and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw.
I've got a motion in a second. Who's the second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. All right, you.
Thank you very much.
You have it. Um, Mr. Clerk, we will go to our next continued case.
Our next case is 342 Andover Street. This is zoned R3, map 39 lot 10A. Request a finding to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use of the property to allow landscape businesses that park in the rear of the built property to also be able to park in the front of the building. Additionally, an expansion of the use of the main building to allow other businesses to rent professional or general office space inside the building, as the dental lab is no longer operational. The request is made by Guy Costanza, docket 25-5108.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
So, uh, update us where we're at.
Okay. Do I stop by identifying myself?
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Guy Costanza. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. Um, after long and careful consideration of this process, I would like to actually withdraw my appeal for expanded use for the front, and would go through the process of, um, removing the three tenants out front, where they are not currently zoned for, and resuming the original use that we were approved for, for the last 30 years. Um, the dental lab itself, I would probably also withdraw that appeal at this time, and seek out renting out to another dental lab, if they might be available. Take a few months to explore that, uh, and get the place kind of cleaned out, and maybe liquidate equipment left behind. Uh, and if we can't find a suitable dental lab to take that spot that I believe it's currently allowed for still, without the appeal, um, then we will come before you for just that solely, and not seek out renting out the front use of the property. Just stick to the originally zoned rear of the property as it is, uh, and try to keep that subdued and minimized on the impact of the neighbors as much as possible going forward.
Okay. Um, so you're, you're looking for this board to, uh, withdraw without prejudice?
Uh, yes, sir, that would be my intent.
Okay, uh, before we do that, let me just go to our planning director, Brian, so, um, currently this, uh, address is not in compliance with a prior decision. So does that mean the clock starts ticking as of this withdrawal, and Mr. Costanza has 30 days to get things right before fines occur? How's that process work?
Um, I think you hit it on the head. I think the board has the ability to give the withdrawal, but it would be under a certain amount of time that those vehicles in the front would have to be removed. So you're essentially giving me a direction to, um, initiate fines after a certain amount of time. So, see how much time he needs, 30 days for getting, for moving several tenants out of, you know, I, I, I don't know if that's reasonable, I think that's the conversation you have to have.
Okay, well, Mr. Costanza, uh, I will, uh, let the board ask some questions if, if you so entertain, but what, you know, we've, we've had you in front of us for quite some time.
Yep.
Um, this is a change of, um, requests, obviously.
Yep.
Which you're well within your right to do.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how much time do you feel you need to achieve getting this property back to what it was originally approved for?
Sure.
And you're real clear on what that approval is?
Yes. I don't want to ask for less time than would reasonably suffice for my tenants, and then have to come back and request more time.
Well, you wouldn't come back, so just so you're clear, once, once we withdraw you without prejudice tonight, uh, you're, you're dealing with the inspectional part of the world on us anymore.
Okay, understood.
So, uh, if, but, but we would, uh, as Mrs. Zakelli has indicated, we would indicate a, uh, uh, you know, I couldn't see 60 days, I, I could maybe entertain 45 days, but I would like to hear from the board, so actually, I want to start down there with you, Kevin. Uh, there, there, this applicant's looking to withdraw without prejudice.
This is questions for the applicant?
Uh, I mean, sure, yeah.
I, I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Yeah, and, and as far as timeframe for him to comply? What do you think's reasonable?
I, I think your 30 and 45-day suggestions.
Thirty to 45, okay.
Sound reasonable. I, I also think, given the amount of time the board has invested in this, and the fact that without prejudice, he could be back in front of us next month, I, I think, um, taking negative action, uh, rather than a withdrawal without prejudice is also reasonable.
Okay. Chris?
I'm in favor of the withdrawal with a 30-day contingency.
30 days.
Also, one other question, have you spoken to any of the three tenants out front? Aware of what might be coming at them, or no?
Only originally, when, uh, the first, the issue was first brought to my attention prior to filing the appeal for expanded use. So I originally thought I was gonna have to vacate them then, in the springtime or early summer, um, but as of right now, no, I didn't, they know it's an ongoing situation, so they're aware, things may change, but no, I have not given anyone formal notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ken Jay?
Um, how, how long do you think you'll need?
Um, I was originally gonna ask for a decent amount more time than the 30 days, only because, um, the tenants have been very good to my father, uh, prior. They have a very large operation, and they're seasonal, as you are aware, they are coming towards the tail end of their busy season, particularly the tree company is quite large, and maybe a little too large, um, but it's gonna be quite the task for any of the three operations out front, to find ample space in 30 days or less, or even slightly more. I, I would like to give them 60 days. I was really gonna request 90 days, but I can tell that maybe, um, asking for more than would be available, but I think 60 days, if you remember the size of them out front, that's quite a bit. It may be slim pickings, particularly at this time of year, for them to find a spot, and I don't want to get into, um, having to force them out through court evictions and stuff like that. I'd like to work with them in as friendly a manner as possible, and not, uh, kick them to the curb so quickly.
Yeah, it's good to do it right the first time.
Yeah, they're, they're feeding their families, and they're working hard, and, uh, you know, they're, if they're willing to leave without causing issues, I'd like to work with them to make that transition as smooth as possible, and not have anybody become vindictive after. Either was, you never know how people may retaliate if they think they're not being treated fairly, so I want to be as fair to them as I hope they'll be to me.
Yeah, I, I, I think 60 days would be probably the maximum for me.
I appreciate that.
But I think 60 days is fine.
Thanks, Ken. Ken?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in looking at my calendar, I think the.
In looking at my calendar, I think the first of the year is suitable.
Okay.
Till the end of the year.
Yeah. Till the end of the year.
Corinne?
I agree. I think you need some extra time because you're going to have to, you know, even if they're tenants at will, you're going to have to give them an appropriate amount of time, at least 30 days. And that's 30 days from when you give them notice, not 30 days from tonight. So, I would be willing to give you more time, but to be, you know, to be clear about this, it means that they have to remove their trucks, but also all of their storage containers and all that other stuff that they're storing, whether properly or improperly, and even in the back of the property.
Yep.
There's some stuff going on back there that's not legal either, and that needs to be cleaned out as well.
I agree.
So, I would give you some extra time. I honestly do not think 30 days is enough time.
Thank you.
Becky?
I guess my question would be, are these tenants on leases?
They are ten and it will.
They are ten and it will, all of them.
Pardon me?
They're all, and they're three tenants?
Up front.
Three tenants in the front?
Yes.
And they're all ten and it will?
There's about 10 total, front and back, but the three in the front would be vacating the property completely.
So, you could give them, you could give them 30 days' notice?
Yeah, legally, yes.
Yeah.
To vacate?
But again, hoping for more to help them find an appropriate space.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, Brian, what about all of the problems in the back and the fact that he's not in compliance in the rear of the property?
So...
That's one of the reasons he's in front of us, right?
No, most of the reason that he was in front of us is we wanted to figure out if he was, if the back parcel, or the back of the parcel was potentially being mismanaged in terms of parking, that maybe you don't even need the front. So, on its face, there was nothing, well, there was a lot of vehicles that should not have been there in storage units. A lot of that has been taken off. So, there were a number of recreational vehicles and other types of vehicles that have since left the property, but the reason, all this started was due to an enforcement order of vehicles in the front.
Okay.
So, like, that is the main issue. That is what needs to be fixed in terms of what he would get a fine for if there are vehicles that will continue after whatever the 60, whatever it is. That's what we would be potentially fining the property for, is what's going on in the front.
Okay. All right. And the building is vacant at this point?
One of the tenants out back, a landscaper, does rent a small office in the building at the lower portion that was previously authorized, to the best of my understanding, but the upper part, the main part that was occupied by my father, has a dental lab, not a dental office, but a dental lab. That has been vacant since his passing last December, and that's what I'm hoping to
Find another...
resume the same exact use.
So, you're going to heat that? We're going into the winter, so...
Pardon me?
We're going into the winter.
Yes.
So, you're going to have to heat that building without a tenant?
Oh, yeah. It's been heated nonstop, yeah. I feel the impact of that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want pipes freezing or anything like that.
Okay. So, I just want to understand what's going to happen, let's say we pick January 1st as a date. As of January 1st, you go out there, I mean, we've had noncompliance here for six months, so I'm sorry, but I'm not sure, you know, that there's going to be compliance on January 1st. What is the process?
I think, so typically how this works is that if we find a violation, we send a letter, we're saying, "Don't know if you knew that you're in violation, but you are in violation. You have essentially 30 days to remove whatever it is you're doing." If it turns out that they're like, "Actually, in this case, I want to apply for ZBA," we don't start fining them after that because they're technically going through the process. Now that this process is potentially over and the fact that it has been extended several times, my take on this would probably be January 1st. If we go out there and there's vehicles there, that's one fine. Then we would go out five days later. If it's still there, that's another fine. We technically could find them every single day per violation, so...
Are you aware of this?
Me? Yes. That's why I was asking for 60 days, if possible, because I don't want to overestimate the ease of the situation for my tenants. As you remember, they're quite a large operation. It is going to be difficult for them to find suitable spot to replace where they are now, so...
So, I'm sorry I interrupted you?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but, I mean, like I said, based upon what has occurred, this has been in violation now for about a year, so, no, we're ready, we're ready to levy a fine on January 1st if that board decides.
Okay.
And Corinne, you had a, yeah, thank, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Costanza. I thought there was one business that was approved for back there, and now there's seven businesses operating out of that back lot? Or seven tenants?
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with, no, it was the use that got, there was never, we've never limited number of tenants back there.
Contractors yard.
There's nothing, yeah, yeah, there's...
They're approved for a contractors yard in the back.
No, I understand it's a contractors yard, but one of the things that we had asked for was kind of like a parking plan. Like, if there are seven businesses back there, what's the parking situation back there? I mean, obviously, when we went back there, things were everywhere, but is this our opportunity to clean it up back there if all of those businesses are staying?
Well, not a few withdrawals.
Right now, there isn't a violation in the back that I'm aware of, and it's, well, really, it'll be like come January 1st, if there's anything back there. Maybe there could be something new, but as of right now, there's not an enforcement under, enforcement order under the rear of the property, and we've had, we have no, there's no issues under the bylaw in the back of the property as far as I know at the moment, other than when we went out there and we saw certain, like, we saw several vehicles and storage containers.
Okay. In the storage containers, though?
Right, so those were the two, the two things that, in the back, that were an issue were vehicles and storage containers. They've gotten rid of a number of those vehicles.
Okay.
Until, and as far as, until January 1st, we'll see, we'll see what happens, but as of right now, we are not in, doing any type of enforcement order in the back.
Okay, all right. And we definitely need to revisit that storage or contractors yard by law.
All right. Mr. Costanza, and I'll say it this way, too. I know you mentioned these tenants and their loyalty to your father, but I feel these tenants have taken advantage of the situation and even more so since the passing of your dad, so...
Up front? Or all around?
In general. I think the, I think the property is not what it was set out to be when this initial decision was granted.
Yep.
That's through what we've heard from the neighbors, from our own site visits, so we'll just make that as a statement. But I would be agreeable. I believe first of the year is enough time. It's not quite 60 days. I believe it gets your landscaping, tree-type businesses through their busy season of the fall.
Okay.
And I think that's an agreeable, if you're in agreement with that, I think that's what our direction to the planning department will be, that this come into compliance by January 1, 2026. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion for a withdrawal.
May I add just one brief comment?
Sure.
Yeah, as I said, I just want to reiterate what I already said. After we go forward and things proceed as planned, I do plan to be more diligent in managing the back of the property, especially since my focus will be narrower and minimizing the impact and reducing noise that bothers the neighbors.
And that's great, and I think your neighbors will be very appreciative of that. The town will be appreciative of that, and I think the property will be, you know, a lot easier to manage if you just kind of set things straight.
Yeah, a lot of this enlightened me to things that I was not aware of.
Sure.
And getting a grasp on things and trying to focus.
Well, and I know you don't want fines, and I'm quite frankly sure the town really doesn't want to be out there writing fines either, so, especially in January, right? So, the goal would be to, you know, move between now and January 1 and get things back in order, and...
Mr. Chair, there are neighbors here.
Yeah, but we're going to have a withdrawal. I'm not, I don't think there's a need to go out to the public, but I guess I'll, if we want, we can, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
No, I was just going to say, why don't we keep it, why don't we do 60 days, so it isn't right on New Year's Day, because I don't think Mr. Zakelli and everyone's going to...
What would 60 days be? Is that January 5th?
January 11th or whatever.
10th, January 10th.
That would be appreciated very much.
January 10th. It would give, yeah, just a little more wiggle time after the New Year, because, yeah, I mean, it's holiday time and everything like that, and I would just give it a couple, a couple more days.
All right. January 9th?
January 9th.
January 9th, that's a Friday.
That's a Friday.
That's good.
And, all right, Becky, yeah, that's probably fair. Does anybody want to be heard from the public? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Costanza, if you could just yield the mic.
Yep.
You look familiar.
You've seen me a few times. Dave McKenna, 383 Andover Street, representing one of the cemeteries that is his butter. Obviously, he's going to be trying to clean up a mess that was left. I don't blame him for it. It wasn't his doing, but it's going to be cleaned up. The fact that he's operating, or one of his tenants is operating on cemetery land which they filled, is that anything that would come into play with this enforcement, or is that outsider zoning in a civil matter?
It's filled, it would potentially be conservation.
Yeah, that might be concom, but that, you know, if any, if, I mean, I guess we'll say this about the whole site, anything that's going on there that's not in the recorded variance that we have is an actionable item by the planning department and our enforcement officer, I think is the best way I can say that. But I will defer to Mr. Zakelli.
I mean, this is the first I'm hearing about fill that's happening in this area.
I sent you a letter when this first started showing aerials of where they were, they had encroached onto the cemetery and filled beyond the property line.
I did forward those to our conservation agent.
Okay.
If they, if they have not gotten back to you, then I will follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
How about that?
All right.
Anything else, Mr.?
That's not part of the zoning issue, though.
It's not, no.
Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And good luck. I hope you get this stayed out.
Anyone else here on 342? Yeah, go ahead to the mic.
Tim Gray, Nine Bucks in the Road, also in a butter. I think one of the original complaints when we first called was the noise on the back part of the property. He was operating in the back garage during all hours of the night, so I think we will make sure that that gets addressed, too, because I think just now we were saying that we weren't going to enforce anything in the back. We're only going to be looking at this.
Well, head of the chair, please.
Just that there was an enforcement, there was not an...
All right, hold on, but, so, just to be clear.
Yep.
They have a variance to operate back there. They should be hours of operation, and, yeah, those are all enforceable actions that can be brought up to the planning department.
Okay.
If we feel that's not being complied with.
Okay.
So, if there are noise complaints, that can come to the town, meaning planning department, health department, but they are allowed to operate a contractors yard at this location.
Okay.
Typically, it's...
In the rear of the property.
In the rear of the property.
Right, okay.
Typically, in town, they can start as early as 7:00 a.m.
Okay. In excavating into the landscape is also part of the, where does that fall into it when he's digging into the embankment in the back of the property?
Well, again, I don't, we can as a board, there's not a lot we can do about that. That's all with the planning department.
That's all with the planning department as well. Okay. That's fine.
And it sounds like Mr. Costanza were going to take him at his word. I think you can agree it is a butter a lot has taken place since this came before us. A lot of things have cleared out. I think a lot of things have been removed, and Mr. Costanza's, you know, going to be under potential fines if he doesn't continue on that path, so...
And can we just, I guess, just ask that it's very clear on what is allowed and not allowed based on previous decisions?
The previous decision?
Because I've heard a lot of "I thinks," and...
I think the previous decision's really clear. They can't operate anything in the front of the property.
Okay.
And...
But they could, so the...
They cannot, yeah, go ahead, Brian.
There's office and dental lab in the building, and then there's contractors yard in the rear.
So, he's allowed to have a landscaper have an office in the building as well?
So, if you have an, if you have an office, yeah, sorry, because he has that office, then he's allowed to park his vehicles and have a contractors yard in the back. It specifically cannot park anything in the front, any construction, or not any, any construction vehicles, but people that are visiting the office, they can have normal, it's those, there's like seven or eight passenger vehicle spots that are in the front that would be able to continue.
So, the landscaper can have offices in the building currently?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. Okay. Because that's why I'm sure that was clear.
Does that answer it for you?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, anyone else from the public? Okay, board members, I'm looking for a withdrawal without prejudice on 342 Andover Street, if someone could...
You need to stipulate, though, what?
I don't know if we...
You can't just leave that open-ended.
Which part?
A withdrawal without prejudice?
If that's the vote.
Right, with the stipulation that...
That, right, that we're going to
Right.
have the property in compliance by January, Friday, January 9th of 2026.
Right.
Does that do it for us?
Can I make an inquiry?
Sure.
So, the way I understand it, that January 10th date is not a condition of the motion, right? A withdrawal is a withdrawal.
Or just giving directions to the...
Yeah, it's directed, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. A motion, please.
So, it should be the 10th and not the 9th, correct? Because that's 60 days even, we should just keep it. Or do you want to do the 9th?
I just want to give a hot date.
But that Friday.
Friday's good.
Friday's the 9th.
Yeah, and then Monday, we'll get this grace period over the weekend, and Monday, someone will be out to have a look. Okay, a motion, please.
I will make a motion to accept the applicant's motion to withdraw his application
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice at 342 Andover Street, docket number 25-5108, together with the stipulation that the property will be in compliance by Friday, January 9th, 2026.
I've got a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. Good luck, Mr. Costanza. Yep. Okay. Mr. Clerk, if we could move on to our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is 165 Endicott Street. This is Zone Commercial 3, map 63 lot 18. Request a variance under Section 37 to install one freestanding sign measuring 42 square feet and 15 feet tall, where only 40 square feet and 10 feet tall is permitted. The request is made by AAM 15 Management LLC, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 25-5123.
Hello again.
Hello again. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, AAM 15 Management LLC, relative to the Kelly's Roast Beef location at 165 Endicott Street. With me tonight is Craig Fannenstiel with AAM 15. And we may have Gary from Metro Sign. Oh, he's here in person. Okay. He's with us. I thought he was going to be remote, from our sign company. And we are here requesting, under the new sign by law, my favorite, a waiver slash variance to allow the installation of a new freestanding small sign for the Kelly's Roast Beef location at 165 Endicott Street. And again, the property is located in the C3 zoning district. The sign, as proposed, you see it up there, complements the existing signage that, the wall-mounted signage for the restaurant, and it also importantly identifies the drive-thru component. The proposed sign is 42 square feet, and it is 15 feet high. It has been cited, as you see, on the plan that was submitted with the application as well, that it's located to meet the setback requirements, and it does not interfere with some drainage lines that are located in that general area that the engineering department made us aware of. In 2013, this board granted a variance for this site, for Kelly's Roast Beef, to allow a 100-square-foot sign, 19 and 1/2 feet high. For reasons I don't know, it was never installed. So, the board at that time found hardship requirements for visibility and the location of the site, and granted the variance at that time, again, for 100 square feet, 19 and 1/2 feet high. We are proposing a much, much smaller sign at only 42 square feet and 15 feet high. Under the new sign by law, which I've discussed with you on a number of occasions, there are a lot of errors in that by law. And one of the errors is that the dimensions of freestanding signage in the C3 zoning district has been changed, erroneously so, from 100 square feet, 20 feet high, as the permitted sign, to 40 square feet, 10 feet high. That was not an intended consequence of the by law. It was not as presented to town meeting, and unfortunately, that's what was approved by the Attorney General's Office. So even though we have a very small sign at 40 square feet, 10, 15, 42 square feet, I should say, 15 feet high, we end up, an error in the by law requires us to request this waiver slash variance. The new sign by law, as a matter of fact, it lets us have two freestanding signs. We're proposing only one. So, with all of that being said, we believe that the sign, it's much smaller than the sign previously approved by the board. It will adequately identify the site, the restaurant, and importantly, the drive-through, and it's certainly very modest compared to the other signs for similar uses along this corridor. We're requesting this waiver variance under Section 37.3.7 of the new sign by law, and the finding that this board needs to make is that what we're proposing is, will be no substantial detriment. No substantial detriment shall result from the proposed sign. Again, it meets all of the setback requirements for the location of a freestanding sign. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And, so, just to be clear, the variance that we approved, I think I said on that one, 2013, now we got to act it on.
Yes, that's, that's correct. It was granted, and this is the sign.
I, yeah. I, yeah, okay, I do remember that. It's kind of weird that I remember that.
And, for some reason, and I don't know, the applicant was not operating the Kelly's location at that time.
Okay, so it was a different owner back then?
Different operator, yes, of Kelly's.
Operator, okay.
Yes.
And I do like that this, so, I'll turn it over to the board, I'll save my comments. But I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so the snafu with the by law, I'll just call it that, would you be before us still for this new sign?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Okay.
No.
All right, very good. I think I'll stop down there with you, Becky. Yeah, do you have anything more?
No.
Okay. You want this back?
When did Kelly's open that location? When did they go in there? Do you remember?
Oh, I don't know.
Probably just prior to that.
It must have been right around that time.
Right around 2012, 2012. Okay, so, okay. And they just never put the sign up? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they, it was determined that it was needed then by the applicant back then, and then they didn't put it in, and it really is needed. So now you have...
A lot of sign activity on that street, so, yeah.
Yes, but this is a small one compared to others.
Karine.
I agree, it's a small one compared to others. I guess my question is, that we're going to grant another variance, why can't we just amend the variance that you already have?
Because it expired?
Oh, yeah, you have to act on it within two years, right?
Oh, that's right, that's right. All right, all right.
One year.
One year, sorry.
Okay.
That's why you are the attorney, and I'm...
All right. All right, well, then, that makes sense, because I just don't want to have any outstanding variances out there for these signs. All right. I don't have an issue with this sign. I actually think it's tasteful, and it's small enough. So, anyway, that was, I'll save that for comments. No more questions.
Ken.
I have no questions, thank you.
Ken J.
I have no questions.
Chris.
No questions, thank you.
And Kevin.
For Mr. Zakali, if I may.
Sure.
Is staff planning on fixing what we'll all continue calling the sign snafu at this coming special town meeting, or...
Oh, snafu. So those, we would love to fix this as quickly as possible. But really, it's really the select board and the manager that are kind of determining the special, at least the special town meeting.
Only in terms of what's on the warrants.
Yeah, so we've kind of been, we've been kind of told to pause on zoning for a bit, and we have let them, we have let, we have let the manager know that not just the sign by law, but also accessory dwelling units, those are the two kind of things that we would like to get on the docket as quickly as possible.
There's more than that.
Yeah, there certainly is more than that, but...
Conversions may need a tweak.
Conversions, yeah.
Large containers.
Accessory dwelling units is tied to both dwelling conversions and EFLAs. So that's one whole thing. When I say ADUs, it's ADUs, EFLAs, and dwelling conversions.
So I, I could understand letting dust settle in town from, and everybody needs to digest some previous zoning changes, and so the pitchforks go away. But, like, to me, this, like, maintenance is a different issue than further changes.
I would love any and all help from you to get this on the warrant as well.
The problem isn't that it's not maintenance, and I agree with you. I think all the maintenance issues should be on it. It has more to do with what they want to focus those meetings on, and they just don't want to cloud anything up with the zoning issues.
I mean, I understand the argument.
Yeah, I mean, the Town Manager Act's review may be...
That's one, that's one of the big ones.
Hours and hours long discussion, right?
But basically, I would, I would love if you were forceful as well in trying to get...
Yeah, because I don't, like, I don't...
Clogging up needlessly.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It's great and work for everybody.
It is, and it's also, frankly, the, like, if I were to put this in, like, in a different, not a town context, but legislature writes a bad law. The job of the court is, of a court is not to, like, fix the law the legislature wrote poorly, right? It's to look at the political branches and say, go fix yourself and write a better law if you want a better law. So, like, giving variances because we, because the law is written poorly is like, I understand we just, the world's got to move along, right? But it's not, it's not the ideal circumstance that we're in here.
Any additional?
None additional, thank you.
Okay. Attorney McCann, I think I've had all my questions answered. I think this sign wouldn't be before us tonight otherwise. So I will go out to the public, anyone here on 165 Endicott Street, Kelly's? You're just waving back there. You're not, okay, all right. With that said, I'll come back to the board, and we will deliberate, and we'll start with you, Becky.
Yeah, I'm not voting on this, but it makes sense to go ahead and approve it.
Karine.
I would vote for this.
All right, Ken.
I'm fine with this.
Ken J.
I'll vote for this, I'll vote for this as well.
Chris.
I will vote for this.
And Kevin.
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, and I, too, will vote in favor. So, Board, if I could get a motion, please, on 165 Endicott Street for a variance.
I make a motion to grant a variance waiver under Section 37 to allow for the installation of a new freestanding sign, 42 square feet, 15 feet high, where 40 square feet and 10 feet high is permitted, in that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning by law would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance waiver does not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning by law.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, moving right, moving right along, yeah, we'll, Mr. Clerk, if we can go to our last case.
Our last case is 25 Pope's Lane. This is highway corridor zone, map 40, Lot 17A. Request a variance under Table 3 to allow the construction of a retaining wall that will encroach a side lot line within one feet, one foot of the property line. Additionally, a finding is requested under Section 3.11 to extend a pre-existing non-conforming retaining wall along the rear lot line. Request is made by MJS Property Group LLC, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 25-5124.
Hello.
Hello.
Busy night, Nancy.
Yeah.
Tell us what it is. I believe you, this property was just before us, not too long ago.
It was, rather recently. For the record, my name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of MJS Property Group LLC. Michael Seelig, principal, is here this evening. Also, Tim Grant from Hancock Associates, the project engineer, is also here. We're here relative to the property of 25 Pope's Lane, located in the highway corridor zone, and, yes, we were before you in August. And we received a finding, a special permit, and variance relief to allow the continued use of this property as a contractor's yard. It's been a contractor's yard since 2018, and at that time, there had been a single-family home that's been adapted as a contractor's yard, non-conforming structure itself. And what we proposed and what you approved in August was some improvements to the site, one of them being removing that residential dwelling and constructing a building that's more appropriate for a contractor's yard. And you granted the special permit for the contractor's yard in the back, then that cross-hatched area is the contractor's yard. And on that, and you did approve some storage containers that would be on the site until the certificate of occupancy was issued for the building, and then the storage containers would be removed. So that's what we were here for back in August. And on that plan, we did show a retaining wall going around the site. There is a retaining wall currently on, along the rear lot line, for a portion of the rear lot line. That was put there, it's about three feet off of the lot line, and it was constructed as part of the approval process that we went through in 2018. While the by law hasn't changed, the interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector has changed. That interpretation previously in 2018 was that retaining walls, that by their design are intended to support and hold up abutting properties, in 2018, those retaining walls were deemed to not be required to meet setback. So we have a partial, we have part of the lot line, the rear lot line, has a retaining wall constructed in 2018, three feet off the lot line, because it was permitted then. We have new zoning enforcement officer, new building inspector, and a change in that interpretation to, to find that retaining walls now have to meet setback. That's difficult, again, because of the purpose of a retaining wall. It's typically, it's going to be along the lot line to support abutting properties. That's the case we have here, but that brings us here. So we're seeking a finding in order to extend along the rear lot line the current non-conforming retaining wall. And then we're bringing that retaining wall around the side, the northerly side, and so that requires a variance because it's, it's a new change. There is no retaining wall there at this time. And the need is simply, this is really, I'll say, classic zoning variance. We have an irregular-shaped lot, and we have topography that the sides, the westerly lot line and the northerly lot line, the abutting properties are much higher. So we have a topography issue to support the variance. We have an irregular-shaped lot, clearly, and we have topography that really supports the need and the granting of this variance. Also important to note, due to the topography, the abutting properties are higher, so the reveal, who is going to see this retaining wall, is going to be the applicant. The abutting properties don't see the retaining wall. The property, 25 Pope's Lane, is lower. So who's going to see this retaining wall? And the retaining wall is high in some spots. It goes from zero up to 15, 16 feet in height. And a variance is required under the new interpretation once the retaining wall is four feet or higher. So that's, that's why we're here. We think this is certainly, the shape and the topography supports the issuance of the variance. It is in keeping with the prior retaining wall. It is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, certainly. It's going to facilitate cleaning up this site the way it was presented to you in August. And that's, that's it. Be happy to answer any questions. Tim, do you want to point out the retaining walls on the...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Tim Grant from Hancock Associates. We're the civil engineers on this project. So Nancy, thank you for that. That was, covered a lot of what I was going to say, so that was good. No, that was great. So the retaining wall in question is on the north side, plan right, if you will, of this sheet, and basically loops around, as Nancy said, the hatched area of where the crushed stone will be. The highest point of the wall is plan right, the northmost side, where it is exactly 15.8 feet or so tall at its highest point. And then on the west side, plan, the plan north, if you will, again, that's where it connects back into the existing retaining wall. For reference, what we show in bold, the bold text around the retaining wall represents the areas where the wall exceeds four feet. So that's what applies here. And then you'll also notice on our wall callouts, where we say, top of wall, bottom of wall, there's also top of wall N S E W reflecting north, south, east, west. So that's just to say that the retaining wall is sort of a stepped block retaining wall that you'll see, just a concrete or stone, and it has, you know, varying levels. So we just reflect that by saying, I can't see the exact text from here, but, you know, we just reflect that it's not, you know, the same 16 or 15 feet high across the full length that it does a...
It slopes as it comes down.
Right. Yeah, correct. That's how to phrase it. Those were my notes. If there's any questions from a design perspective, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney McCann, before I turn it over to the board, I'm going from memory here, I remember one of my concerns was the gas storage issues on site.
Yes.
Can you tell me what has changed with any of that?
It was immediately taken care of within a week.
The fuel cube, right? Yeah.
Yes, and...
It was within two days.
Yeah.
And what about, so that was the cube?
Yes.
What about all the other gas containers that were on site?
Fire department came out and reviewed and...
So it's all been all inspected?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to the board, and we'll start with you, Kevin.
So the changing interpretation of retaining walls and whether they can be along lot lines or need to meet setbacks, in your opinion, ma'am, was the previous interpretation right, or is the current interpretation right? or is the current interpretation right?
You're asking my opinion? I, my opinion is that the prior interpretation is correct. I understand Mr. Zekely's reading of the bylaw, but I also understand that retaining walls for, to meet their purpose should be along the lot line because of what they are intended to do.
That makes sense to me. I guess, given that you feel that there was an error in interpretation, maybe not an unreasonable reading, but not the most correct reading of the zoning bylaw, why not appeal?
Why not appeal?
Right, so that's, I mean, you could ask for a different relief, but the relief you asked for assumes that they are correct. If you think they're incorrect, why not appeal their decision?
Well, I think I'd be before this Board asking you to find that the code enforcement officer is wrong, and I think I have a stronger argument for a variance based on irregular-shaped lot and topography.
Mr. Zekely, yeah?
So, the thought process, so, the building inspector and I, the first, the first thing that we had to determine was, what is a structure? Turns out, it's a structure once it reaches four feet. So, if it's over, so you could build a small whatever, if it's under four feet, you can go all the way up to your property line. The problem that we had is we envisioned that if we went under the older interpretation, essentially, an entire street, let's say the whole street is, you have a, you have a big backyard that's just sloping down, the whole street, everyone has a sloping yard back down. If we would take this interpretation or the previous interpretation, I would be able to build a 30-foot-tall wall surrounding my property. Therefore, your neighbors, you're going to go up to the property line, and then you're going to look at this, you're going to do this, because there's going to be a 30-foot-tall wall there. So, if we take that interpretation, that one as well, any homeowner would be able to put a 50-foot-tall wall, or probably not 50, I guess it would be, 30 would probably be the max, because that would be, that's the maximum amount of a house. So, you'd be able to do a 30-foot-tall retaining wall, fortress-style, around your property. We felt that this was not the intention, and that no one should be able to do that by right. That's it in one sentence.
So, if it's a wall, four feet by right? If it's a fence, six feet by right?
A fence can much more easily be taken away. You can easily take a fence down, that's the discrepancy.
Sure, and, okay, so...
And my problem with Mr. Zekely's interpretation is that he's talking about you could build a wall, and it, in order to meet what has been previously the interpretation, it has to be a retaining wall. It can't just be a wall.
No, agreed, but it'd be a retaining wall that, in order to base, like I said, if everyone's, if everybody's backyard was completely sloping down, it would be a retaining wall, but...
But it wouldn't be around the whole thing, as you described, because otherwise, you'd be in a bowl, right? And the only person who would see...
No, I think what she means is that you're talking, it would be the rear of the property to level it. It wouldn't be needed out front.
No, you would still need it on the sides if the whole, I mean, yes, you would still need a retaining wall on the sides.
It's, it's one of these situations where the prior interpretation was an exception, they, retaining wall was an exception to the definition of structure.
Correct.
And current staff, building inspector and code enforcement officer, does not see the exception.
I see, okay. So, so I guess the next issue, I'm kind of thinking of building a retaining wall directly on a property line, where it's the abutting property that is higher in elevation, is usually there is some structure put into the higher elevation piece, be it, you know, footings, fill, all these kinds of things, right? So, if you build it, if the wall itself is directly on the property line, that means you have to excavate a fairly significant part of your neighbor's property in order to engineer that wall correctly. Am I understanding that?
There, this is not right on the property line, I suspect for that reason. So, it is not right directly on, on the property line in this case, other than in a section down at the bottom where we actually have a use variance, I'm sorry, a use easement.
Some of the, I mean, the topographical hardship, I certainly buy here, right? Why else would you need a retaining wall? I guess, in terms of the lot shape, sure, but I guess I have a little bit of a problem with subdividing a lot, getting a variance to subdivide a lot, and then coming back and saying that, oh, well, the lot's irregular. Like, you can't create your own hardship in order to meet the requirements of a variance, to me.
Yes, I would, I would agree with you. This applicant didn't create that lot shape, but that's okay.
You live in the constant in the property, even though it's a different applicant, I think, I think now.
It, yes.
Yeah, yes, and I understand, I understand that you're, that was on behalf of a different applicant, and, yeah, okay, thank you, nothing further.
Chris.
No questions, thank you.
Ken Jay.
I have no questions.
Ken. No questions. Corrine.
No questions, just comments.
And Becky.
Just clarification on how high the wall is now and how high the wall will be? The current height, it will be at its highest point. He said 15.8. 15.8. It is currently over four feet in height in some sections, and... And where is that? Can you, just so we know what we're dealing with. So, that's four, like, four now, and it's going to 15?
It's higher than four now.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is the area where it's going to be.
And it's zero where?
It's not exactly, it's very, it's much closer here. You see the distance?
But, I mean, the height of the, there's no wall there at all now?
No, not around here, this is all new.
And that will be how high?
It varies, okay.
Okay.
It slopes.
You can, you can do the...
So, yeah, it starts at 15, it's about 15 feet tall during this whole corner.
Right.
And then, when it gets down to here, right here, where my thing, that's, it's only three feet tall here.
Tapers down.
Okay, I know, it's a crazy street, the way that the lots are.
Basically, 15...
It's so steep.
15 feet towards the back and about three feet tall towards the front.
Okay, so, it come, all right. And then...
These numbers here give you top of wall, bottom of wall, so that's where Brian is saying there's three feet, because it's 100, and it's 97, so...
Okay.
That gives you your heights. And we did spot heights along...
Attorney McCann, if you could just go to the mic, though.
Yeah, okay. I have the plan, but I would like just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I have any questions. I guess, has, has work started on the site besides this?
Some prep work, but no, because we're, we have to go through site plan approval as well, which we are very close to filing that, probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, no site work.
And this would be the first step, is to do this retaining wall?
Probably not the first step in the construction. I don't know the construction sequencing, but getting this approval in place is certainly necessary before we start site plan.
Okay, I look at this as a lot like a fence, and especially, as Becky pointed out, I think Pope's Lane certainly warrants something of this nature. I guess I don't have any further questions, so I'll go out to the public. Anybody here want to be heard on 25 Pope's Lane? Hearing seeing none, I will come back to the Board, and we'll start with you, Kevin.
I don't have anything further, thank you.
And Chris.
I would vote in favor of this.
Very good, and Ken Jay.
I'll vote for this as well. I mean, it's absolutely necessary, as it's so low and the other properties are so high, so.
Ken, oh, thank you, Ken.
I will vote for this. We didn't hear from any of the butters, so obviously, nobody else has a problem with it. I'll vote for this.
It's the cemetery, I think, up back, isn't it?
Oh, no, don't go cemetery.
Mr. St. Pierre isn't a butter, and...
This morning, or this earlier...
And he has no problem with it.
Yeah, okay. Corrine.
I would vote for this, and I'm not sure whose interpretation I agree with, but I have no problem having more people come to us to ask permission than just putting it up, so, and I, but I will vote for this.
And Becky.
Yes, I'll defer to the Board, but I would be in...
You would be in favor, and I too see this as a necessary need, so if I could get a motion, Board members.
Okay, this is a two-part motion, so...
Oh, sorry, it's a finding and a variance?
Right, a finding and a variance.
So, let's do the finding first.
Okay, motion to grant a finding under Table 3 to extend a pre-existing nonconforming retaining wall along the rear lot line, in that the proposed extension alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.
I'll second.
I've got a finding request with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, okay.
The second part, motion, I make a motion to grant a variance under Table 3 to allow the construction of a retaining wall that will encroach a side lot line within one foot of the property line, in that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning law, bylaw, would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the good, of the public good, and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
I've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And before we sign off tonight, I just want to take a minute to wish everybody a Happy Veterans Day tomorrow, and to all the vets out there, so...
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask for one thing?
Sure.
153 Andover was continued to this meeting?
Yes.
Would it be possible for us to read that into the record and continue it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think that...
The minutes specifically say to this meeting.
Yeah, I think that's probably something we should correct, yeah. But do we have that?
I have it here.
You do, okay.
If you, that's 153.
So, we're going to extend that...
Just for...
Yeah, so we'll read it in...
Just to get the vote in.
And we'll get the vote to continue it, and that's going to continue till November 24th.
24th, yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if you may...
153 Andover Street, this is Route 114A zoning district. Request a special permit to allow for a contractor's storage yard to be operated at the address listed above. Additionally, the applicant requests that two storage containers be placed on the property for more than 180 days. Request is made by Interstate Property Management, care of Preza Abrusa, LLC, docket 25-5112.
Okay, and could I get a motion to continue this to November 24th?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And again, Happy Veterans Day, everyone, and if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And seconded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, damers.